Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting for December the 2nd, the last month of the year. So, in our year, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Cochran, absent. Councilmember Gonzalez, here. Councilmember Hamrick, here. Councilmember Haquez, absent. Councilmember Meisner, here. Councilmember Turner, absent. Mayor Protim Smith, here. Mayor Trotman, here.
Okay, I'd like to call Guy Herford of the Connect Church to do our invocation. Would you please rise?
Father, we just come before you and we just lift this meeting up to you, Father. We just ask you for your blessings for this meeting. Father, we ask you just to give them wisdom and grace in the decision-making. Father, we just thank you for all that you've given us. Father, we ask you for the blessings for this city. And Father, we just ask you for your grace and mercy for us in our daily lives. And we just praise you and thank you in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
President of the Legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, in the beginning of the meeting, we would ask if you'd like to address council on any particular issue. If it's not on the agenda, then fill out one of those forms and give it to our clerk, Cindy, and then I would call you up. If it's on the agenda, we'll wait until that agenda item comes up and we'll have you come to the microphone at that time. So, if you'd like to talk to council, please come to the microphone and fill out a sheet for Cindy. There's no rush apparently, so. Okay, well, thank you. Any comments at this time from city council members? Mr. Meisner?
Just a reminder that this Friday, or this Saturday, is the Chamber of Commerce Christmas Parade Light, 6 o'clock. And then we do a tree lighting at 6 o'clock Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday, on the 5th.
Yeah, and there's gonna be smores and a snowball fight. That's legal.
Those are real snowballs, though.
They're fake snowballs.
I think that could exclude them from the ordinance.
And it is legal to throw the snowballs.
Yes.
They're not snowballs.
If you're done with your meeting, I'll go ahead and continue. Any other comments?
Negative.
Okay, anybody else?
Well, we have general government on Wednesday, too. And the radio on Wednesday as well. Now, new council members, I think Mandy and, oh, you already had some things. We have two of the new council members will be joining us on the radio on Wednesday. And so, if you want mayor, I think that'll be your last one as mayor. Are you gonna be there?
I don't have to attend, I mean...
I think you should go. This is your big finale.
It is? Okay, all right, I'll go. I'll wear my radio dress shirt.
And your cap.
My hat. I'm gonna wear my hat to the tree lighting.
You should.
My son insists on it.
Speedo.
And my grandson. Yeah, so what else? We had, well, yesterday, we had a very pleasant soft opening for Nirvana, the new Indian-style restaurant in downtown Canyon City. And it was wonderful. I had never eaten Indian food, and it was quite good. I'd encourage you to, of course, go downtown and see downtown and maybe stop in and see them and welcome to Canyon City. Good bunch. Anything else?
There is, but I can't remember what it was.
Well, we have, Friday, we have...
Oh, I know what it was. Go ahead. Friday, city council and elected, city council-elect will be conducting our personal interviews with the finalist for the city administrator slot. So, hopefully, if things were to go well, at the end of those interviews, hopefully, we will be to a point where we could ask the attorneys to negotiate a contract or something. Hopefully. What's the time after that? When the process is, is as we do the interviews, we make a selection, and it's not really a selection, it's more like a choice. We then try to have the attorneys negotiate a contract, and then, once the contract's a done deal, then we announce? Is that the process?
That'd be my recommended process, yes.
Right.
And that contract would be placed on the agenda for formal approval.
Right, and then it comes back to council to make an official, make it an official vote and decision of council to hire that individual and accept that contract and what have you. And that could be a week, it could be three weeks, who knows? I mean, it just depends on how things fall out.
Thank you, Jim. I think the public, we're gonna have sort of a public at 8:15?
There will be, I'm gonna call it a brief meet and greet at 8:15 to 9:30, I think. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Is that Friday morning?
Friday.
Friday.
Friday morning, there'll be, yeah, from 8:30, or 8:15 to 9:30, there'll be a meet and greet here, right? Down here. So, just, what we're trying to do is get those candidates to visit some of the outside locations, to get them a feel for our city. And when you start talking about, you know, 15 minutes here, 15 minutes there, 15 minutes of travel, that whole day gets eaten up real quick, so. But 8:15 to 9:30, I think, is the meet and greet here, if you wanna stop in.
Jim, will you be making the assignments on who's gonna be taking our candidates on tours?
Well, kind of. I mean, we just, we need to make for sure that we don't have two existing council members per team. And I thought that Catherine had already allocated some primary drivers.
I believe that is the case. She has been doing a lot of allocating.
Right. And I think the primary drivers are the three new council people. Is that not correct? So, that's not to say that an existing council member couldn't join them, and you're welcome to do that versus standing around here, I guess. But we just gotta be careful that we maintain that maximum of two. Can I answer your question?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Anything else from council?
I have one thing to mention. Small Business Saturday was last Saturday, and I just wanted to say thank you to all the businesses and community members that went out to make it successful. It's very successful this year.
Yeah, pretty busy.
Yeah. I missed it. I had an orthodontist appointment.
Well, what is it, the old thing, getting you there is like pulling teeth? Well, guess not.
Nice shoes.
There were some places downtown that were pretty busy.
They were.
I don't know how much the people were buying, but a couple of places I stopped in.
I've heard from a couple of business owners, and they said it was one of their successful, most successful.
Well, and then Taylor West had their first fashion show, and they said they're gonna start doing that every Mother's Day and for Shop Small Saturday after Thanksgiving. And I think that's another great draw to downtown and business, so it's really exciting.
It was fun.
It's just a long project. I mean, things aren't gonna happen overnight, but I thought it was successful.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, anything else? I'm gonna move on. All right, I would ask the acting city administrator then to review the agenda and the consent agenda.
All right, on the consent agenda, we have item 8A, which is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on November 18th, the general government two meeting on November 13th, and the special city-county council meetings on November 12th, November 20th, and November 21st. 8B awards bid $59,19 to Burdemeaters to the Hat Company of Loveland, Colorado, in the amount not to exceed $15,398.06. And 8C is to file the list of bills.
Any additions or corrections to that? Mr. Meisner?
On the minutes for November 21st, that should be corrected that I was present at that meeting and Mr. Hamrick was not. We both agreed to that.
Good.
I have one, two, actually.
Yes, ma'am.
November 18th, for section 16, 1.16.050, and addition of a new chapter 17.18, says I was absent on both of those, and I was here.
Anyone else? Any questions? Can I ask someone to move that we approve the consent? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I apologize. I took a short break.
That is correct, that's why I was...
I just remembered, so, no, they are correct. I'm sorry.
She's withdrawing her correction.
So, you're correcting your correction.
Yeah.
Okay, I would then ask for a motion of council to approve the agenda consent agenda? Mr. Meisner?
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
Second.
Second. Ms. Gonzalez, thank you. Any questions to that motion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Hey, thank you. Number nine on the agenda is consent of the administrator's report. I'd ask our acting city administrator to comment on that.
Yes, mayor and members of council, want to recognize police cadet Morgan Rockmore, who graduated from the police academy on Friday, November 22nd. We look forward to seeing him join our police force as a full officer. Parks Department is working on upgrading or updating tree lighting along Main Streets in order for the parade, the Christmas parade, on December 7th. City staff has also been decorating City Hall, as you can tell, for the festivities of the holidays. We have received five applications for the facade improvement grant. We've approved all five of those applications. We're gonna see some new updated awnings going in along many of the business storefronts along Fifth Street, so looking forward to seeing that work done. That work will probably be completed in January, maybe February of next year. Zia Rides, which is the endurance bike race that was held in May, they've contacted the city, they'd like to come back, so at the next council meeting, we'll be bringing you a new contract for Zia Rides. And then, on the 14th and 15th of November, I attended the Southern Colorado Urban Renewal Symposium that's held by Downtown Colorado Inc. And it was a very well-attended session from Southern Colorado. Great opportunity to network and learn from other urban renewal authorities in the southern region, and there's some very good contents there. And then, finally, the finance department was at the Government Finance Officers Association Conference in Pueblo the week of November 18th. It was nice to have that conference so close to home. We were able to send attendees who don't normally go to those types of conferences to, you know, learn and network from other finance officials across the state.
Any questions from council? Net? Okay. This will go on 10 public hearing. Got my glasses here. It's a public hearing, I'm gonna open the public hearing. An introduction and first reading of ordinance 34, Series 2019, entitled "An Ordinance Rezoning Certain Real Property Within the City of Canyon City, Colorado." So, the public hearing is now open. I'd ask the acting administrator or is...
Mr. Mull, ready?
That would be me.
Would you? Go right ahead, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we are hearing the matter of the rezoning request for lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 of the Central Park Minor Subdivision. It's located north of Central Avenue between Fields and North Reynolds Avenues. The applicant is seeking to rezone this property from RL, Rural Living Residential, to R2, Medium Density Residential. Council members may recall that last year, this same property was the subject of a minor subdivision request to split the property into five lots. Although one lot fronting Elizabeth Street has been sold to a future home builder, no other significant activity has happened in conjunction with this property as potential home sites. As comprised the four lots, which are the subject of this rezoning request, comprise approximately 3.71 acres and range in size from 32,388 square feet to 48,477 square feet. The applicant seeks to rezone the property to R2 Medium Density Residential. This is a zoning designation which would allow for construction of duplex units as permitted under zoning. When compared with surrounding uses, or surrounding zonings, an R2 designation at this location would actually be more consistent with the zoning that's there. The properties to the south of Central Avenue are also zoned R2. The properties to the south, the properties to the east and north are zoned MH1, which allows mobile homes at up to eight dwelling units per acre. And finally, to the west is an R3 High Density Residential zoning, which permits multifamily residential at densities up to 10 dwelling units per acre. The R2 Zone District requires a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet for single-family residences and 7,000 square feet for duplex units. All of the remaining lots within the Central Park Minor Subdivision are well in excess of the minimum lot size for the R2 Zone. Lot 1 of the Central Park Minor Subdivision, which sold off to a separate property owner several months ago, will be the only lot to retain an RL, Rural Living Residential zoning designation. This lot complies with the minimum lot area and street frontage requirements for the RL Zone District. Section 17.40 of the city's municipal code specifies three criteria against which rezoning requests must be evaluated. Of these, the third criteria definitely does not apply, as this request is not predicated on a future community-related use being established here. This leaves the first and second criteria. The first criteria referenced in section 17.40 requires that one must compare the existing zoning and the proposed zoning to land use recommendations made in the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, last updated in 2001, recommends this portion of Canyon City be residential in character, but does not become specific as to recommended densities. Thus, R2 is as valid a residential zone district under the existing comprehensive plan as RL. This leaves the second criteria, which examines changes that have occurred or are in the process of occurring to such an extent that it becomes a matter of public interest to encourage redevelopment of the area. The applicant has made the following observation in the project narrative relevant to the second criteria. Quote, "The proposed action is for the remaining four lots of the Central Park Minor Subdivision to be rezoned R2 Medium Density. I believe at least one of the criteria required to rezone in Title 17.40, .040, has been met, and the demographics of the area have changed and are still changing. Canyon City is growing and developing and is in need of affordable housing. The current zoning, RL, is not consistent with the surrounding area. The demand for rural living in this particular neighborhood is becoming obsolete, and large parcels of unused vacant land are not beneficial to the community. I believe it is in the public interest to approve this request, which will allow various potential development opportunities," end quote. Noting the applicant's position that this request satisfies the second of the three criteria for rezoning, and that the first criteria is supported conceptually, and that both R2 and RL are residential zone districts, a salient fact in the evaluation of this request is that the R2 Zone does allow for duplex units. Duplexes would effectively double the permitted residential density on site. Staff is given to understand that as a result of the current need for attainable housing in Canyon City and a recent influx of new population, additional residential units, even at a higher density, is considered a positive result. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this rezoning request on November 20th, 2019. Citing findings of fact concerning the rezoning, the appropriate public hearing notice, and the city's legal jurisdiction to act on the land use request, the Planning Commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation to council. Which means that both staff and the Planning Commission recommend that city council approve the rezoning request for lots 2, 3, 4, and 5, Central Park Minor Subdivision, to R2 Medium Density, with the adoption of ordinance number 34. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have. Present to speak on behalf of this project is the owner and applicant, Vicki Pullen.
Is Vicki here? Oh, would you come forward? Any questions from council of either Vicki or the staff? Mr. Meisner?
Thanks, Vicki. Somebody made, hasn't the owner of lot 1, haven't they already constructed their home there?
Yes, they just finished, they got their CVO last month.
Has anybody contacted that homeowner in terms of this change?
Charlie was here at the Planning Commission meeting. He's well aware of it.
He received a mailed notice, that he was also aware of the signs posted on property for both the Planning Commission and council hearings.
And did he voice any objection?
His only objection seems to be, since he's got a nice, brand-new home, he'd like to preserve the area, to comply with that, and just keep it newer.
He's worried that duplex units would potentially lower his property values if they're not done well.
I don't disagree. I mean, I understand his concern. He just bought that lot, and now all of a sudden, kinda like a bait and switch. Those are my concerns.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions? Ms. Gonzalez?
Hi, I don't really have any questions. I just have a statement to make concerning home, just homes in general in our area. We don't have enough, and this could help alleviate some of that problem if a builder were to come in and develop something that was more affordable for a lot of our population. So, I understand the neighbor's concern, but I also understand that we have a huge need in our community, and this could help alleviate some of that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Hamrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is for staff. I remember when this, when the original subdivision request came before council and it was approved. And after that approval, I did talk to the, at that time, city administrator about the approval process, because one of the concerns that I had is that there is a, essentially north to south, it's kinda northeast to southwest drainage through the property. It's shallow drainage. And my question concerned exactions for stormwater. And if I remember right, council took some action where we codified allowing, allowing exactions to be established upon subdivision, is that correct? But since this is not a subdivision, this is a zoning request, any stormwater considerations would be taken care of during the permitting process.
And/or building permit as well.
And/or building permit.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, yes, thank you. Thank you, that's my question.
Mr. Meisner?
So, Patrick, was this owner of lot 1, would you say he was in favor or opposed to this?
His words, at least through the minutes that we got, were that he is not opposed to it, he's concerned about the end product of what will get built there. He wants to make sure that it's a quality construction that takes place.
And how do we protect that? How do we protect that interest?
Short of adopting some design standards for residential, I have no guarantee to give you that the development is, building duplexes out there will be of a certain minimum dollar value for potential owners. There's not a way that we can legally enforce that.
I understand the need for housing. Go ahead.
And frankly, that's not one of your criteria for looking at a rezoning request. It could be the same lack of quality, Frank, for a single-family residence.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I think another consideration, too, is that it is already surrounded by R2 and the MH. And so, I mean, it really, the new zoning is consistent with the area around there. I mean, his lot is right across the street from mobile homes, so.
Thank you. Any comments?
If I may?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Last year, when I did the subdivision, the request for the subdivision, I didn't rezone at that time, just to kind of see what would happen in the area. I figure anybody that's building new on any properties in town is not gonna build a shed to live in or a shack. Most of the builders that I know do a quality product. By rezoning this, I'm not doing a bait and switch. R2 zoning allows still for single-family housing. They can do single-family or duplex. I've read the UACOG report that was recently done for the housing needs assessment, and the study confirms an overall lack of housing for owner-occupied or rental properties. Vacancy rates in 2018 were at .9%, which normally run 5% to 7%. There's a huge need for temporary contract workers, DOC workers, laborers that are doing work around. The supply of finished lots is very limited. My subdivision basically supplies not only the five lots for development, but unwittingly, I increased my tax base five-fold, which contributes back to the city, the county, helps out the area by doing the subdivision. The demographics have changed. My lots are the only rural ones for quite a ways around there, so I'm just trying to be consistent. It does provide the opportunity to build immediately, single-family or duplex. If a developer happened to go in there, they could greatly reduce their construction costs by building out all of the lots in there, because they do one staging, one permitting, one traffic control. Everything's in one spot. They don't have to keep moving things, reducing their cost, which can reduce the cost of housing if they so choose to do that. That cost savings might result in a better product, because they are saving money on it. I just don't know any builders that are gonna go in and build trash. They don't want that on their reputation. I don't believe they'd agree to it, and I haven't met any of the builders in town that do that personally. Doesn't mean there aren't, but they still have to meet all of the codes for building criteria, so I just hope the council will support this action and let us provide some more opportunity for newer housing.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt on first reading.
Let's make sure there's no more public comment.
Right. I'll call for the motion. Ms. Gonzalez?
I just had a couple of questions. I'm trying to see if it clarifies better in here. The water tap, there was, Bob, I think you had written that a water tap would have needed to be installed in one of the properties?
I have one on one property.
You have one on one property?
It's existing already utilities that was to the old house.
Okay, so the rest would need water tapping? Oh, okay. And then, my other question was about the fire hydrants, and I don't see anybody from the fire department, but would each lot need its own fire hydrant?
No.
Okay.
I'm at, I have talked with all of the different entities for utilities, fire hydrants, everything. I've talked to all of them, and they have signed off on the plan or the processing that Patrick sent out to all of them. And the fire hydrants are located close enough to the properties to address any issues.
All right. My concern is you selling the property and then all of these other issues mount.
I've covered off on, as if I was building them now myself. I have talked to... I have talked to all of the entities, so.
It's, it's pretty well-covered. I just had a couple of questions. Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment at this time? Thank you. Thank you. If none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and seek any questions from council. If none, I'd ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve on first reading ordinance thirty-four, series of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Mr. Hammack, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's go. Number eleven is introduction and first reading of ordinance thirty-five, series two thousand nineteen, entitled, "In ordinance of the City of Canyon City, amending chapter sixteen point zero four of the Canyon City Municipal Code concerning Annexation Policies and Procedures." I'm going to open up a public hearing on that and I would ask, I guess, Patrick again to cover that for us. Go right ahead.
Counsel may recall that at the November twen, November nineteenth Vision Committee meeting, this item was adjust, was addressed. Effectively, what this ordinance does is scale back some of the provisions that are currently called for in the processing of annexation requests for property that the owner wants to see included within the incorporated city limits. Right now, within our code, the process involves several subroutines that are kind of redundant and, and in all of their cases, they go above and beyond what state statute requires for annexation. And the real reason for doing this is that if you examine state statute, it says that this is a matter of state importance, which means the statute itself effectively trumps local government's ability to complicate that. So, we could potentially have liability on our hands if we adopt procedures and policies that are beyond what the scope of state statute says. And this is also a chance to sort of, you know, scale back and deregulate in some ways some of our land use processes, which I understand council is in favor of, so. We are asking that you approve this ordinance on first reading tonight following a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Any questions of Patrick? Mr. Meisner?
So, Patrick, my first question is on page two, the, the first dotted paragraph. Explain to me that last sentence where it starts with elected councils are usually the ones empowered to decide whether to modify a municipality's boundaries through annexation. Then it goes on to saying, I mean, what is that, what's that saying there, that last?
We currently have a procedure. I mean, normally what happens is an ordinance or a request to annex property is solely at the discretion of the elected body. The process that we have right now involves including the planning commission as an advisory to evaluate these. And again, that's beyond what the scope of state statute says should happen. Annexation should solely be something that the elected board determines and it should be based upon the provisions of the agreement. It's got to be mutually agreed upon by both the property owner and the elected city council.
So, are you saying, so what are you going to do? You going to get rid of sixteen oh four?
No. We are revising sixteen oh four so that it strips out all of those other requirements and makes the process consistent with what state statute says, is what the process should be.
So that that would be a, a sole council decision?
It would be exclusively a council decision, yes.
And, and Councilmember Meisner, I would add one thing to Patrick's response and that is, the previous code had planning commission evaluating annexation. That's what was improper. They will still, under your current processes, evaluate the proposed zoning. It's just that their recommendation will only be as to the zoning, not as to the annexation itself. Because that goes beyond state statute.
Go ahead. Any question?
So, I mean, essentially, this brings us in compliance with state statute all the way around.
Correct.
With no additional.
We have not, we have not overcooked the annexation process. We've made it consistent with what state statute says. This is what a municipality needs to do when considering an annexation.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
I don't have a question. I just cleared it up. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Hammack?
I'm up. I, I would just point out that although it might have been a twenty-page document if you had done so, but, but a red line of the changes may have, may have helped us understand a little better.
Okay, we'll, we'll note that for the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comment of council? Are you staring at me for a reason? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion, a second. Ms. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number, what is it?
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, series of two thousand nineteen on first reading.
Mr. Meisner, a second? You have to say it.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick. Well done.
One of five thousand.
And if any of you are free later this week, the Whistler is being performed at the Steeple Event Center. I am part of the cast of that, so if you are available, we would love to have you come and see it.
We'll be there.
I didn't know you were a performer.
Whoa.
I, I've been cast as the villain.
This makes sense.
Wow.
Oh, my goodness.
If I were up here, I'd say that was perfect.
Oh, stop it. All right. Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Patrick.
All right. We're going to move on to number twelve. This is a second reading, second reading and adoption by title-only ordinance twenty-nine, series two thousand nineteen, entitled, "In ordinance of the City of Canyon City, Colorado, appropriating sums of money to various funds and spending agencies in the amount, in the amounts and for the purpose as set forth below for the City of Canyon City, Colorado, for the two thousand twenty budget year." Would we have Tammy or Acting Administrator?
Yeah, this is a second, a second reading for adopting the two thousand twenty budget. We don't have any additional changes or new information to share with council, so turn it back to council, please.
Any questions from anybody? Council?
I'd just like to thank Tammy and her, and the department heads and staff for putting their work into a budget that we are in budget. We still have twenty percent savings set aside and we forecasted, I mean, the possibility that we won't be getting an extra five hundred thousand dollars from the Black Hills franchise agreement, so I think. And looking to the future to maybe the economy not being quite as robust as we have been in the future, so thank you for a responsible budget that has been submitted.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
Well, we keep talking about minor adjustments, but when are we, when are we going to see those numbers about, like the park thing that we're talking about, moving over to, to Title seventeen changes or whatever it is? Where's that stuff at?
Tammy, do you want to come up and talk about changes?
She thought she was getting away with it, huh?
So, we did make the changes for the, initially, we had a hundred thousand set aside for, we had it budgeted initially in Macon Plaza, in the line item for Macon Plaza. We have moved that and put that into the planning and zoning department's budget. The actual final document of the budget, I will be, once the ordinance is approved, I will be getting that to council and hope to have it for you for the next meeting. So, you'll have the actual completed, completed budget. We also did remove a position in the water department. We reduced the capital items. We reduced the water main extensions from over two million down to the, or the water main replacements, sorry, from over two million down to one million. And we also removed a capital item from water for the backhoe. We moved it from the two thousand twenty budget and are requesting it, going to request it in the two thousand twenty-one budget. We also reduced in the police department, the amount for the contract for the dispatch center. That was changed. We also rolled forward funds for capital items and projects that were not completed in two thousand nineteen that will be completed in two thousand twenty. So, there'll be some of those items that, some of those line items that you see will be increased. We also did roll forward the funding for the facade grant that is approximately forty-six thousand dollars. So, that line item in the economic development budget went from fifty thousand to ninety-six thousand because we're not spending it this year and we're still anticipating having additional requests next year for that program. Those are some of the major changes that, that were made.
And that, that was the facade and fire life safety grants?
Together.
Together.
Because you just did some facade grants.
Right. So, those projects will not be, they'll not hit this budget, budget year, so that's why we're moving them forward.
And the life safety grant as well.
Right.
Mr. Meisner, will you continue?
So, was the, was the fork, was the backhoe expense an additional item or a replacement item?
That was a replacement item.
Mr. Hammack?
And I also believe, Tammy, the, the, one of the things that was reduced was a request for police patrol vehicles. Is that correct?
Initially, the request came in from the department at a higher amount that, than we funded. But you will now see an increase in that line item because we did order the vehicles in April or May of this year and as of today, we have not received those. We are anticipating we're not going to receive them until after January, so therefore, it becomes a two thousand twenty expense. So, we did move that funding forward. That's also the same thing with the service truck for the water department. We ordered it earlier in the year and anticipated delivery is next year, so we, we rolled that, those funds forward.
Mr. Meisner?
So, what did we decide on the MTDs and the, and the cookie fund for the MTDs and the replacements? What's the official approach between the PD and you people? How are you going to handle that?
So, the way that it was explained to me is that we were going to have to purchase additional MTDs in two thousand twenty because there were still officers that did not have the, the MDTs. And so, that's what my understanding was of the funds for the forty thousand dollars for two thousand twenty. In the future, what we can do is in our reserves that we have set aside for capital, we can just increase that amount by the forty thousand a year and it will not show as a expenditure in the department. It will just be a restriction on our reserves. And I think that will help clarify with council and it will also make it that those funds are not available to the police department to spend during that year. Because if it's in your bottom line, they may want to try to spend it.
So, the forty thousand that we talked about, whatever it was, uh, that's actually going to get used as an expense and not put into this replacement fund?
That is the way I understand it for two thousand twenty because he says we do not have enough for the officers that are in the field. So, it looks as if in two thousand twenty-one, we're, we're, we would start actually building the reserve for that.
Ms. Smith?
I was curious why the water main replacement got reduced by a million dollars.
One reason is because we had over two million set, we initially put two million in there to help keep up with the two-way road projects. We have been able to basically keep up with the, with the one million. We still needed, we still need, there are times when we still need additional to do some additional mains, but it has been, it has been okay the last few, few years. Some of the mains that we're replacing aren't necessarily in the order we would have wanted them to be replaced. And then also, we did it to make sure that the water fund is still having reserves in the area where we need it to be. We don't want to deplete the reserves.
Mr. Meisner?
I guess that is a good question Meisner had, is where is that million dollars being reallocated?
Yeah, what are you doing?
It's going back into the reserves. We're not, so instead of spending two point, I think it was two point two million, we're going to spend, we're going to spend one million and that other one million stays in the reserves and so it can be used for future.
Wasn't there concern that we needed to replace more water lines?
That's what we heard last week.
Because we were in the Centurion Club and then we were having a lot of breaks and, Bob, maybe you can?
It's how we justified a water increase.
Right. Yeah, that is how we justified the water increase, was that we wanted to replace water lines.
Good evening, council members, mayor. Yeah, we did have those discussions. However, as Tammy said, we didn't want to draw down the reserve balances to a critical level to where if we had an operational emergency, we wouldn't be able to call upon those funds. Even with the water increase we're talking about, it's not going to be enough to come close to covering that one million dollars. So, yes, we do need more revenue to help keep up with two-way. I mean, for example, we did Forge Road this year. Well, I would have loved to have replaced a section of that of water main, but there was no money. And given that the water main was not underneath the new asphalt, then the decision was made that it wouldn't get replaced. But, yes, the need is there, but not at the cost of drawing down our reserves to such a low level and it's not prudent.
Part of this is also in response to some of the two thousand nineteen revenues not coming in as, as expected or as budgeted. So, we're, we're being responsive to some of the revenues that we're not, that we're not seeing this year. So, we, we had to cut some of the projects for, for next year because of that.
And we won't see, we won't see the revenue increase from the, from the rate increase until the following year. And we knew with doing North Ninth Street next year, that's a major water project and also a major two-way project. We knew that we would be okay the, the rest of the year as far as two-way is concerned as well. So, we're, we're good to go on both aspects for infrastructure until twenty-one.
Any other questions? Ms. Meisner?
Well, I don't know how to ask this, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at the, the little notebook, which is antiquated information now, apparently. What's your total water fund budget right now, expense-wise?
It is, I think it's actually listed in the ordinance. I don't have a copy of the proposed ordinance.
Is it the seven point five nine three?
Seven point six million.
I don't know what my question is, other than trying to figure out what I'm approving.
Yes, the seven point five.
That's on the figure.
Nine thirty-two seven four, which is in the ordinance. Those figures that are in the ordinance do reflect the changes that I've mentioned.
So, based upon, I'm understanding, it's not going to be seven point five nine three, it's going to be six something. Is that correct?
No. The seven point five nine three is with the reduction from two million plus in the water main extensions down to the one million. from two million plus in the water main extensions down to the one million.
I guess.
Ms. Smith?
Um, if the ti, if there aren't any more comments, I would like to make a motion.
Okay, I have to close. Is this? No. Okay, then I have a question. Um, with all this, you're going to submit a new and revised budget so that it's clear what we're, we're doing here?
So once the ordinance is approved, I will get the final budget book put together and give, and have it provided to council.
It just seems kind of opposite.
But, well, that doesn't mean the council can't change it.
Okay.
In a way it does. I mean, it seems as though there's some changes here and there that.
Right, I understand.
And now we're approving and then you're giving it back to us with those numbers clarified, so to speak. It does seem a little backwards. We have to do it that way.
Well, historically, we've done it that way.
Is that, okay. All right. Ms. Smith, will you want to make a motion?
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number twenty-nine, series of 2019 on second reading.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Thank you, Tammy. Are you going to both stay there?
Thanks.
Okay, this is the second reading as well. It's the second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance thirty, series 2019. It's entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Certain Water Rate Schedules Set Forth in the City's Water Code Relative to Water Service Provided by the City, by the Canyon City Water Department, a Water Activity Enterprise." Mr. Harsman, would you like to talk or would Mr. Stevens?
Again, this is a second reader, reading. We do not have any additional information for council and open it up for questions, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of council? Mr. Meisner?
It's a question about this, but not, are, are you going to give us one of these when you're all done, like we had last year?
The final budget document?
The final budget, yes.
Not a condensed version, but a bi-year version of the budget so that we have a quick ask, access to it?
Yes, we will print out the final budget for you.
Okay.
I, I again am not in favor of increasing water rates, but it is what it is. We got to do it.
Okay. Any other questions of council? Then I entertain a motion. So move a second, make. Mr. Meisner?
I don't want to do this, but, Mr. Mayor and council, I moved it. We approve ordinance thirty, series of 2019, second reading.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Thank you. Any discussions on that motion in second? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Bob, Tammy. Thank you very much. Number fourteen. Let's move on to it. It's introduction. This is the first reading. So it's first reading by title only of ordinance thirty-three, series 2019, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Canyon City Amending Various Sections of Title Twenty-One, Adding Definitions Concerning Residential, Non-Residential, and Mixed Use Structures, and Further Clarifying the Permitted Uses With," is that with or within the floodway?
Yes.
Within. Is it within or with?
Within.
Within the floodway. Okay, that makes sense. So, Mr. Lang, sir, you're going to discuss that or Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Lancaster.
Mr. Lang, would you go forward?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. So, uh, as discussed previously, uh, we adopted chapter seventeen, point one eight previously this year, uh, which is the riverfront zoning. And that is part of, um, what we're looking for as far as development stimulus in that area. And as part of that development, we want to allow certain types of short-term human occupancy in those fixed structures that may be constructed there or may already exist, um, there along the river. And some of that development may be or, or is already in the floodway. Uh, so there's a need to first clarify, um, those types of uses that we're allowing there within the floodplain regulations and make the changes necessary to allow what we want to allow along the river. So the distinction between the floodplain and the floodway essentially is the floodway is a component of the floodplain. Um, the floodway is the most, uh, the most restrictive area as far as construction is concerned. And we currently have, um, code that is more stringent than what the state and federal requirements are for us to be a national flood insurance program, um, participant. And so when we were looking through, we decided that there was a number of things. One, there, there was not in our code or the state and federal code, any good definitions of residential or non-residential, even though those are the main distinctions as far as the risk that is concerned with flooding. Obviously, there's more, uh, more concern with risk of the residential than non-residential. So, uh, one of the first things we need to do is come up with some definitions that were, um, defining what we are looking at allowing there within the floodway and floodplain along the river. Uh, and, and we wanted those definitions to be consistent with other parts of our code. And so we added that. And then there were some, uh, other things as far as, uh, that I'll go through that we want. Again, back to the allowance of the short-term occupancy. We don't want permanent residents in the floodway. Um, but there is some short-term occupancy that we do want to allow in that area. So, um, I apologize that the, the so-called red line that came through in the agenda that was sent out did not come through red line. So we handed those out today so that you can see those better. So essentially, if you look in the ordinance, section one, those are the, the three definitions that we're talking about adding to Title Twenty-One. Uh, mixed-use structures, essentially, that's, that's what it is. It's, it's a combination of residential and non-residential. Again, back when we were talking about the riverfront stuff, we were talking about some lower level, similar to what we have in the downtown area, lower-level commercial with some, maybe some upstairs residential, uh, sorts of things. And then we have non-residential structure, which we wanted to include not only your typical non-residential, but, but again, what we, we are calling short-term human occupancy. So a hotel, essentially. And so we had to def, add that to the definition and define what that short-term occupancy is. And then again, we have residential structure and, and what that means. Then section two, uh, was kind of, the change in section two is kind of a housekeeping thing, um, with a reference to floodway. Uh, there was no other references like this with any other code that we looked into. We don't know where it came from or what its intent was, and it was somewhat ambiguous as far as what the stream side of the floodway meant. So, uh, since no one knew what it meant and the state and feds were okay with us taking that, we, we struck that language because it wasn't conducive to what we're trying to do on the riverfront. Then in section three, another housekeeping, uh, that the attorneys caught when we were looking through this, there was a sentence in there, uh, with regard to the design level that's required for protection when the floodwaters reach a certain, uh, velocity. And so we've cleaned up that language so it's more clear sentence describing what's required by the design engineer when they, um, are looking at those structures. And then the final housekeeping was in section four. Um, basically just striking some of those, uh, again, those, some of those terms that were undefined and unclear what they meant and striking that, those and just cleaning up some of that language. Then finally, in, um, well, in section five and section six, then was, now that we have those separate definitions for each type of use, um, previously, there was just a residential and a commercial type discussion as far as what the, the standards are for that. And since we had three new defined uses within the floodway and floodplain, uh, we had to separate those out and define those again on what the protections are required for each types of those structures. Um, so, so for example, in under residential, we didn't change anything except we had to, we had a mistake from a previous, um, update where we weren't referring to the proper, um, chapter for critical facilities. Uh, same thing under non-residential. We had to fix that reference to the critical facilities. And then we added, uh, the sentence about those structures that are intended for lodging. Again, people essentially staying overnight, uh, those areas would have to be elevated to or above the floodplain, um, regulatory flood protection, uh, elevation. And the reason for that again is those, that's when people are sleeping. That's when floods happen. Those, those are the dangers there. So commercial or non-residential structures don't have to be elevated, uh, to the standard that residential or overnight lodging is, is, uh, required because again, that, that risk factor. And then section six, we had to add a whole new section. It's basically identical to what the non-residential is, um, for that definition as far as what the standards are. Um, but then again, talking about that upper level elevation for people who are staying the night. And then finally, um, section eight, that's the part, this is the biggest, this is the biggest change and the biggest help to the riverfront zoning, um, development is we had some restrictions in there that were, again, not very clear, uh, depending on how they were interpreted, could be very stringent as far as human occupation. So again, we cleaned up this section. These, this section deals with what is specifically prohibited in the floodway. And so, um, we're back to saying residential structures because now we have a residential definition. Before we didn't. And so before it said human occupancy, which again, it, what does that mean? That's pretty much any building somebody walks into. So that means you couldn't build anything in the floodway in Canyon City, even though there was no state or federal requirement for that. So now we're, we're still, we still think and recognize that it's very dangerous to build residential structures in the floodway. So we're still prohibiting those specifically now that they're defined. And then, uh, again, we're, we're also prohibiting mixed-use structures that have any residential uses on the ground level or non-residential that have lodging on the ground level. Um, so essentially what this does is it allows us to build a hotel or mixed-use within the floodway as so long as those areas where people are staying the night are elevated above the flood level.
Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
Absolutely. Okay. I, I think I understand this, but I'm not sure. When we talk about non-residential structure and residential structure, first of all, I see boarding house in both of those and that seems confusing to me.
And the reason that's that way is because you can have a boarding house that, um, has an on, an onsite resident. So then they would not meet the thirty-day standard. So we didn't want to disclude boarding houses altogether because there are some boarding houses that don't have a live-in caretaker, so to speak. Like a bed and breakfast specifically would not be non-residential because bed and breakfast by definition has the owner living there full-time. So it would not allow someone to have a full-time residence there, uh, with the short-term occupancies. Because again, if, if it were to flood, someone would lose their permanent home. Whereas a boarding house, if it, if it was impacted, then you're, you're losing some temporary housing, but no one's losing their permanent home. So that's why it fits in both definitions. So under non-residential, it would be someone who's not living on, onsite, full-time. Whereas residential, if someone is living onsite, full-time, and we would find that out as they go through the building process and the zoning process, then they, then they would be, uh, meet the definition of residential.
So that would technically apply to a hotel that offers room and board to their manager.
Right. The difference with the.
Because they would be permanent.
Correct.
Or be, be longer than thirty days.
Right. And so then they would have to be, then they would be deemed a mixed-use and so long as that residence is, is second story, they're, they're golden.
Okay.
So, so basically, if someone's living there full-time, you're, you're either, you know, there's, there's still that little bit of a gray area between the mixed-use and residential, but, but you're going to fit into one of those categories. And then for sure, by our, by our, um, criteria that they have to meet, that, that those permanent residences will be elevated. And even for the, even for the hotel section, the overnight stays, the lodging has to be elevated above the base flood elevation also. So again, we're, we're, we're trying to roll back the rules a little bit, be a little more lenient, but still protect against the risk.
Continue for a minute.
Uh, so I just need an explanation. Regulatory flood protection elevation, what is that?
So that is the base flood elevation. That is the elevation on the, on FEMA's map that says this is how high the flood is, plus one foot freeboard.
And is that the floodway or floodplain?
That's the same for both. That regulatory floodplain elevation is the same within, it, it applies to both the same.
So in page two, item one, you mentioned that the certification has to be done on the construction plans and then a second one on the finished construction. I'm not sure I understand the need for two.
So one's a verification that they built it, built it right. So one is them showing, yes, we're going to build it to this elevation. Two, it's like an as-built that, that proves, because we don't want them just to say we're going to do it and then they mess up and build the elevation.
Like we've already had.
Right. Because then what they, they can't insure their property then. So before, before they are allowed to occupy it, they have to prove that they built it to the proper elevation.
I guess my preference.
And, and that's a FEMA requirement. So that's, again, we're trying to, we, we found these things that were in our code that somehow got there and we weren't sure and we couldn't get, we couldn't get, um, any answers from the state and federal officials as well as far as why those things were there. And they, they essentially said it wasn't required and.
And that's like an engineer stamp or something, right?
For an elevation certificate, it can be done by an engineer or a licensed surveyor. Yeah. And that's pretty common. Uh, in fact, you have to have an elevation certificate now to get insurance, even if you're not building a new structure. They're phasing out all the, um, pre-firm building policies. And so they're doing more, uh, more actual risk assessment now on each policy that comes in for renewal. So, um, everybody has to get an elevation certificate now to, to, you know, it basically, it, it helps them rate the structure as far as risk, um, for the amount of insurance that's needed.
Okay. Mr. Hammack?
Thank you. The, my, and my question may not make sense, but I'm looking at section eight on page three. And our, the pro, pro, um, prohibited uses include listed A, B, C, any mixed-use structure with residential uses on the ground level. Doesn't that require a reference to the regulatory flood protection elevation?
Right. So if you go back into the criteria, then that, that refers to, um, to that regulatory flood elevation. So regardless of where they build it, the, the, the floor that people sleep on has to be above the base elevation. But then as far as the floodway is concerned, the prohibited use, we're saying, we're saying we don't even care what that level is. They have to be on the second story for floodway.
For the floodway. So this is, this, this essentially, these prohibited uses are for structures in the floodway.
Correct. Section eight is prohibited uses in the floodway. Yes, good, good distinction. Yep.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
So my question revolves around section five, number two. And with non-residential construction, so you're saying that they can now build like commercial buildings at the floodplain, at the floodway level?
Yes.
As long as they are protected from the water?
Right. There's, there's a whole litany of other, you know, engineering criteria that they have to meet just as far as the structures design, foundation design, all those sorts of things. Um, but they can now build within the floodway with this change.
With this change. And I'm kind of thinking about conversations we've had around like the ice plant and wanting, you know, to put in some commercial business, um, that does not have overnight, um, people staying in it. And even things like having garage doors open, little glass doors open up to the riverfront for outdoor seating and all of that. Is it possible to be able to create that type of environment and still have those doors be impermeable to the velocity of the floodwater?
Sure. And what the, what the design engineer has to do is certify that it's, that it's flood-proof by the, the federal standards. And so that's, you know, based on the type of material it's made out of, if it has flood venting that's installed in it, those sorts of things. Yep.
Okay. I think that's good for me. Yeah, I, I think that's good because the, I mean, there's, it opens up a lot more possibilities.
That's, that's the intent of, yeah. Is that, that's the intent?
Uh, I'm trying to find my, I'm trying to scan through here, but you're saying that section eight applies only to the floodway?
That's correct.
All right. And that's all under item E, right?
Yes. Yeah, that's section fifty E two, that refers to prohibited uses within the floodway.
Are you still scanning?
We currently have no prohibitions of construction within the floodplain with, except critical facilities.
I just don't see.
And even critical facilities can be built in the floodway, but their standard's even higher. Critical facilities are things like nursing homes, hospitals, fire stations, those sorts of things. Fuel, uh, fuel storage.
Are you done, Mr. Meisner? Are you still scanning?
Hold on, sir. Okay, I, I, I think it makes sense.
Okay. Any further questions?
Are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I would like to say this is great. I really appreciate that, Mr. Lancaster. It's, uh, does clarify it and I deal with that a lot in just residential stuff, but drills back to the people. If they're going to spend a lot of time and live there, probably not going to do it. But if you get above it and stay out of it, you're good to go.
And this lets the developer, the owner take, take upon the risk themselves instead of us telling them what, what that should be. Obviously, their insurance is still going to be elevated, there's still, there is still a risk there, but they, that, that's their choice to take on that risk.
Right. I appreciate that.
And, go ahead, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Um, my question though is, is, uh, about, about insurance. It's elevating their insurance, is what you're telling us?
Well, if you build in the floodplain or floodway, you're going to have an elevated insurance rate based on anybody that's not. Uh, but again, that's your choice to build there and pay that insurance. And you're only required to have insurance if you've got a federally backed mortgage on it.
Well, right.
So you can even roll the dice even further. If you, if you paid cash for it and built it with cash, then you don't have to have any insurance if you don't want.
Okay.
For flood?
You know, flood insurance on a house is about a hundred dollars a month, just, just a regular floodplain.
I live at the top of a hill.
Oh, one of those people that doesn't care.
Yeah, but you don't need it if you pay cash or you don't need it, so, if you're crazy. Or if you live on the top of a hill.
Or you can be like some folks in Houston.
Over by the hog bags.
Who decided to build six feet above the flood, um, level. And when that big storm came in, they were the only ones that weren't flooded because they went way above and beyond the normal standards. And so they were pretty happy that they made that extra investment at that time.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, my, my, my point is again, I, I commend you for letting the people decide what they want to do versus the city dictating, this is what we think is best for you. I mean, lay those things out there, let those people make a decision, and if they want to pay the extra expenses to do things, so be it, let them do it. And I, and I appreciate you people taking that effort to, to, to move in that direction. We just need to continue. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're looking for a motion?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Mayor, I could be here all the live long day making motions to reduce standards and regulations on our development and builders, and so we really appreciate this.
You will, you will, at least for the next two years, you will.
I hope to.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the floodplain management regulations, Title Twenty-one, CCMC, on the update for ordinance number thirty-three, series of two thousand nineteen.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Hemmerich? Thank you, Mr. Hemmerich. Any discussions on that motion, second? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Smith?
Aye. Thank you, Adam.
Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Well, anything else for the good of the cause? We're going to end up here.
Yeah, if our city, acting city administrator could bring us one reduced regulation per month.
Per month. Well, that, that new council.
Well, he's running out of time. This is his.
Well, then he better get going.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.